...we have an international America and a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. That's seven minutes after seven, good time to start. This will be the December first, people be council meeting. Call the board please.
Team?
Here.
Fisher Brown?
Here.
Sparks? Olson?
Here.
Matha?
Here.
Gambino?
Here.
Grant?
Alright.
Want to approve the minutes, somebody like to do that job?
Mr. Mayor, I know that we approved the minutes from the number seventeen, right, will be?
Right.
Second.
Call please.
Team?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Matha?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Alright.
Another council table. For Mr. Mayor, I immediately approve and accept the council's table as presented.
I'll second.
Call please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Matha?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Alright.
Team?
Yes.
Under special orders, we will interview and appoint Harvard Commission applicants. I understand we have long for this yet. Would you like to come up and sign in please?
Good evening, I'm Jeff Weisman, one eighty-five southwest south point in Deepo Bay. And I'm now the vice president of the Harvard Commission. And after reading the newspaper and listening to some news talk here, wondering what I do here. But I think I don't have any knowledge other than what I read and talked to a few people about the Harvard. You know, it is in fact, during the several council meetings and the people talk. I think being an outsider, don't really know a lot of people in this community yet, I can offer a different point of view. I know there's been, you know, two major groups trying to control this harbor, I think. And I know you guys made some changes in how you fill the vacancies on this mission, and I commend you for that. You're looking far wide for help, and you've asked for a lot of input from different specialties. And one that I haven't offered on the business, I work for Oregon State University and have some marine science there. I manage their grants and contracts, and the students' scholarships and things for them, as well as pay bills. So my background in management and accounting, I can add a lot to this committee. And I open it up now to questions from you guys.
Well, they're gonna know you real quick, Jeff.
I can handle that.
I thank you so much for stepping up. When I saw your application, we got to know you earlier this year. Thank you, Bravo. Thank you so much.
And it'll get to know me much better as we go along.
And you're a brave soul, and you know, this is, to use one of my favorite phrases, you know, kind of dropping in where angels fear to tread in some cases, but Bravo, you know, approve your spirit of community activism and involvement and, you know, as somebody who I consider myself still an outsider because, you know, although I have lived here since, was it two thousand eight, I think, fall of two thousand eight when I moved here, and I do know a lot of people in town, but I still, you know, I joke with my boyfriend, he knows more people than I do. But be that as it may, you know, a fresh perspective and a fresh set of eyes, especially with your experience, I think would be a real benefit. So, given the history of the committee, what do you feel are your biggest strengths and, you know, are you used to working with, obviously, you were used to working with a team, can you pull consensus out of different point of views?
I have a tendency to message everybody's point of view. I don't make harsh decisions. On any of the commissions that I've sat on in the past, I've always listened to all sides. I was chair for the Children's Development Commission of Highland County for two and a half years. I never make snap judgments. I advise my committees always to walk away and come back next time if they want to vote on something. I think getting the input and then going out and talking to the community and getting their opinions before you make a vote on anything makes a big difference on how I do things.
Yeah.
And I try to come up with consensus. Obviously, that always cannot happen, but, you know, the vote is everybody agrees.
Okay, good enough.
I have a question for you. You said you manage grants, or you?
I manage and I put proposals in, you know, go through all the processes. Once they're awarded, then I work with the KIs and manage them all the way through till closing.
So you have experience in researching and applying for grants, and you know how to do all that?
Yeah.
I couldn't hear that quite, but I guess that's what I was gonna ask anyway. What exactly do you do at the Hatfield Marine Center?
I'm their chief of accountant in the business office at Hatfield, and I manage grants, contracts, and I take them, like I say, all the way from the proposal stage all the way through to closing. And some of these are multi-million dollar grants that I work with. And I also work with the students. We award approximately ninety-five to a hundred thousand dollars each year in scholarships for our students out there. I work with those students in managing their scholarships and budgeting and taking care of those things. And pretty much anything else that needs to be done in the business office.
I see. It's the first time I've had the pleasure of reading your resume, and I have to apologize for that. Health funding seemed to be a bigger priority, but here we are anyway. So I do appreciate your candid reports here, and even though you don't have any experience, it's refreshing to see it in the face. I'll pass it to you.
Yeah, Jeff, I've seen you here several times, so your commitment is, your willingness, this is obvious. I commend you for that. To me, you seem like the perfect person for the position, but you're well qualified, because that's exactly what you're doing.
And your thoughts on that are?
That you're well qualified and very good for the position. My only question is, do you have any brothers or sisters that would need?
I'm a hit for litter, what do you mean?
No, I appreciate you stepping up, and I think you did the asking. Thank you.
Joel?
Oh, well, I've seen Jeff coming to the meetings on his own time, and interested in the business of the city, and I think that it's great that he stepped forward, and I intend to press upon Jeff my personal cell phone number so he can call me anytime and answer any questions that he might have concerning the harbor. And I'd like to sit down with him and give him a little primer on the history of the harbor and how we got where we're at right now. But, you know, one person is a good place to start.
Absolutely. Like you said, it's a big brother tonight. Like you said, it's a big brother.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Make a pair of towels for me.
Does anybody need a towel?
There's only one, can we go?
Just, we only two.
I can't remember, in first, second, third grade, when the ten people we had to get up to write something down on the whiteboard, and another student write texts to us, and if I didn't know what to write, I'd look.
I thought maybe you guys were collecting coin. I see.
Not yet.
We don't feature any of them.
It's the door, why didn't?
Here we go, should have.
No, actually, no, that's the proper way is the way you have it there. Yeah, you ever put it on the?
Dad wears one of those.
They're very practical. Billy and I could all run. Yep. Something that's for change.
The ballots have all been turned in, and the vote is unanimous to appoint Jeff Weisman to Harvard Commission, position number seven.
Sorry, Jeff.
So, motion to accept the tally of the votes and make that appointment.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we accept the nomination of Jeff, and that we welcome the arms over.
Second.
What's the main, second? Call please.
Olson?
Yes.
Matha?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Alright.
Team?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to...
See what you say next to her.
Round to item six, reports of officers, boards, or standing committees.
Yes, sir.
Roy Higlin, three twenty-five southwest coast, Deepo Bay. I'm here representing the planning commission, and I have two items. First is the status of the proposed zoning ordinances. The, we had two public hearings, and the last time, we voted it okay, and to go to you people for your public hearings. There was a few minor text changes that had to be done after that meeting, so we're effectively done right now. What's gonna happen is Larry's gonna incorporate them and send each member of the planning commission, and then we'll give them a thumbs up. And once that's done, it is done, and it goes over to you. It has to be, I believe, posted twenty days or something like that before you can have your first public hearing, either one of them, the plan development ordinance and the parking We did have quite a bit of public input, not as much as I would have thought. So, the second thing is, two meetings ago, I think it was, you voted in a motion to have the sign ordinance go to the planning commission for review and any suggested changes. That, I'm not questioning that, what I'm questioning is, do you have any specifics? It came up after the sandwich board issue. Is that the singular thing you want us to look at? You want us to concentrate on that, look at the whole thing, or what was your thinking? Whoever? Is he?
Yes. The sign board for sure, but, you know, just something happened in Bunchett Prairie about three weeks ago. It didn't happen, it just, there was a barbecue that opened up at a post office. That barbecue now is closed. It didn't stay open very long. But there was a sign that they had put up on their window, and that sign was one of the LED ones, the ones that are programmed, much like one at Center Market. But as I recall the ordinance, there's provisions as to how often that sign can change, and so I'm wondering if we shouldn't look overall at the entire sign ordinance. I don't have a opinion one way or the other of the flashing signs. I just think our neighbors in north and south are doing more and more, or from what I can see, reducing the restrictions on some of the signs. Even out in Newport is for sure. And I wonder if we shouldn't take a look at that too, Roy?
Okay.
That's just my personal opinion.
Those LED signs are distracting when you're driving. I will say that.
My understanding, or my feeling was that one of the things that we wanted to specifically review and look at was the placement of the sign, and specifically where it's okay to have a sign, and specifically where it's not okay to have a sign.
Specifically a sandwich board sign or any sign?
Both, in my opinion, because I know that there are both out there that are being used, and some of them are placed appropriately to the best of the merchant's understanding, and some of them are not. And so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just gonna echo what both councils have said, is things have changed since that ordinance was written, the LED signs, a lot of the flag banners you see where you stick it in the sidewalk and it's a big waving flag. I just think we just really need to review the whole ordinance, maybe compared to what some of the other cities are doing, and kind of get in line with that. You just echo on the LED lighting. The one at the barbecue place wasn't too bad because it faced the gray light west. There's a hotel in town where they had it, where it faced north, and when you came around the corner into Deepo Bay, it looked like police lights. It was red and blue. I actually had made a complaint about that, because it was so distracting, it was like emergency lights. So maybe something with the LED sign, you know, the ordinance would say it can't distract traffic or appear to be emergency lights or something.
Joel?
Oh, yeah, I guess that for any, you know, I mean, Council President Olson mentioned some of the, maybe some of the changes that have been up north and down south in Newport. I have noticed something, I don't know if they hold the same standard for government versus, in Newport versus private business, but I know that the Newport High School has a banner, a reading sign that does different things. Of course, and it's off one of what? I considered putting a, at one time, it's been quite a few years ago, a Jumbotron.
Wow.
Flat against the building, so we'd have to look, so that with a camera displaying the waves out of the ocean, and playing some videos there. But I think at the time, the city wouldn't allow it. Of course, I didn't make a big deal about it, this is, I guess, at least eight years ago, probably. And, but then I noticed that seventy-six station has a reader board, and that it does different things, maybe not like a Jumbotron. But then, I also was questioning ODOT, and there might be some, I mean, I guess anything that we do is trumped by what they will and will not allow. And some of the advertising signs that they're using along different parts in Salem and Eugene, they're concerned about the distraction, okay? But then again, if you ever, my first exposure to that was just north of Tacoma.
Tacoma, yeah.
Five, they've got that sign.
It's the weirdest thing I've ever seen in my life.
Was that the one there by the Amber Queen Casino, that one?
No, I think it's...
The RV place?
RV place, yeah.
But, so, I don't know. I guess anything we do would have to coincide with ODOT.
Or at least much was ODOT.
And that faces one of, that faces their property, and it could be a distraction. I don't know.
Safety is the biggest issue we have to look at, I think. Both on the sidewalks and distraction. Anything else? Appreciate it. Any questions for me?
Thanks, Roy.
Thanks, thank you. I'll see you in two weeks.
One of the public comments. Anybody have anything? Unfinished business, item eight, legal services. What we got on that three?
That is on the agenda tonight because, I'm looking at the minutes from the September fifteenth meeting, and there was a motion at the September fifteenth meeting to retain the services of Mr. Getner McPherson Getner Diaz for an interim of three months until the first of the year. So I asked the mayor to put this on the agenda tonight, we have a month till it's the first of the year, just to get direction from you on what you want to do. Do you want to continue with Mr. Getner? Do you want to put advertisement out? That's why it's on the agenda.
As I recall, Pete and his crew offered that three months of coverage at the death of our counselor, our counselor for them. I would, so far, so good. I would say we certainly should offer them a crack, but they did tell us that they're gonna do this temporarily for us. My opinion is, is that we should offer them a chance to see if they want to do that, but also I think we should go out to advertisement like we were just on plan. I really do.
Has Mr. Getner expressed any interest in, you know, providing services beyond the already stated deadline?
He, yes, he would, and he is willing to do so.
Okay, is that then something that we have to put out for good then, or if?
It's up to the council.
Okay.
Firstly, I'd like to make a motion for the three month extension. And he and I had a past private conversation. He was alluding to the fact that he might be entertained in the position, so I don't know if that's true or not, but I'd like to see the three month thing, and we'll find out where we are.
You know, I'm fine with them right now. My only thing is, is that we have a complicated relationship with this particular offer. Complicated before my term and the mayor's term in office. And so that's my only trepidation with this firm, that's it. Because so far, they've been great. I have no issue with them.
You know, boy, man, he got, on the positive side, once again, that's long water under the bridge, and I don't think that problem exists anymore. It's been taken care of. And so far, Mr. Getner has been a real champion for us.
Well, they've been great.
I hate to lose you. So, somebody would like to entertain a motion for the three months?
How about this? Mr. Mayor, I propose that we offer them a one-year extension, and at the end of that year, they can tell us if they're interested, and we can tell them if we're interested, which is pretty much what we have already.
That's fair.
I'll second that.
Anybody have any more comment? Call please.
Matha?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Alright.
Team?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes. I really wanted to. I am, though, I really.
Yeah, good, as we found out.
Yes.
The attorneys have heard it somewhere, especially local. And he's been here joining the squad every time.
Tell me you can't die.
I'm already going.
Okay, alright.
But I'll tell you then.
I'll be, Harvard Master Plan, request for proposals for marine engineering consultant services.
Okay, the draft you have before you is, it's got the little pink sticky note, and it says redraft, November nineteenth, twenty fifteen, post November, well, humpback meeting. So this is, this is the draft proposal that you all saw at the urban renewal meeting, I believe of November third, as urban renewal board members. After that November third urban renewal meeting, the Harvard Master Plan Advisory Committee met and reviewed that very same draft that you had seen. Some minor revisions were made, and so it's before you tonight, because it will be up to you, the city council, to say, put it out, start advertising. Because it's gonna be the city that's going to be letting the contract ultimately.
I have a question. I was unable to attend the humpback meeting, I can't remember why, but I didn't make it. So they all looked at the humpback tour, and they had no major revisions to some of those.
Primarily, primarily it was to have the word engineering in it more.
I'm sorry?
Have the word engineering in it more than the first draft had. For example, on the second page...
You had used consultant.
Yeah, I think that the word before was consultant, and they, at the top of the second page, under project description, item eight, preliminary engineering was recently completed, but the paragraph above that, I think the first draft where it says the Deepo Bay number master plan will provide conceptual engineering design, it didn't have the word engineering. And so the advisory committee members felt, well, we just don't want somebody to draw us a picture, we want engineer design. So really, that was the focus of the revision. Other than that, it was pretty much accepted as it was drafted.
Now, I see that down in the master planning process, needs analysis and identification of program elements, basically, they're going to look at making a business case for the harbor, is that correct? Is that what that means?
That is definitely gonna be part of it, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then my last question, it was strictly about the humpback report, and I know that's in process, correct?
In my understanding, yes. I talked to the chair of the committee when we were putting the agenda together for tonight's meeting, and he said, not yet, working on it, so.
So I guess where I'm going on this is that we're gonna put this RFP out, and it's gonna be published in the normal manner, and we're gonna get hump team inquiries of our responses to it. Will that humpback report be ready to hand the winner of this bid at that time?
I don't know.
Is there any way that we can lash our chairman to get this done, or actually help the staff to get it done? The reason I'm going there is that, for the very first time in a very long time, a large group of people got together to discuss what's important to the harbor. Now, some of those people are not involved right now because of circumstances beyond our control at this table, but in any case, it was valuable information, and it was collaboratively done, and I would want to make sure that that report is completed to hand to the person in asking group that wins the RFP bid. How do we ensure that happens?
If I might ask, so you're talking about not having that report available to proposers?
Well, we could, but as you want to be ready, because we're talking about going up RFP soon.
Well, the timing, the timing is up to, if it's, that, that would probably be a good piece of information.
I would prefer to go with it, because I was afraid it would be done.
If part of the package to go with the RFP. Again, I don't know, when I talked to the chair, and he said, not this meeting, not this agenda for that report from the committee, I said, well, I'll be talking to you on the Thursday before the next council meeting, which will be like around ten. And he said, give me a call. So I don't know.
Okay.
So...
You know, I just want to take that, which was a collective effort, and I want to make sure that the people that are working this program have that.
I talked to the chair just three days ago now, and it was my understanding that he won't have it ready for our next round of meetings.
Then I'm fine. I would rather go with the RFP, I didn't know if you were...
I was gonna say, if the council would rather postpone, I mean, you know, if you're ready to tell staff, put this RFP out, and then we'll talk a little... ready to tell staff, put this RFP out, and then we'll talk a little bit about, you know, closing date, or if you'd rather wait till we have that report. It's, we're looking at maybe two weeks.
I think if it's such a short timeline, then we should go ahead and wait for the report and include that with the, you know, with the RFP.
Is there any...
With, yeah, whoever needs it.
Is there a downfall on waiting two weeks to get it out?
Time.
You just lose two weeks?
Lose two weeks, but also there, I'm just saying, it's a little leverage. If we move forward, that means we gotta have that report sooner. Longer we wait, further we put this off.
Right.
That's not, that's...
Jerome, a lot of the high-five...
Stuff is in here.
It's in here, yeah.
But the larger report on all of it.
On all of it, like the details?
Yeah, I want the details to go to these.
Because that could be like part of the stuff.
Yeah, because we're talking about forty people had input on that, and then it was filtered down, and it's still into whatever the final report is going to be.
Mr. Grant?
Okay, a couple of questions is, first is, Council President, are you talking about, when you're talking about the meeting and all the input, are you talking about multiple meetings or the one meeting?
No, I'm talking collectively, Jerome, all the meetings.
Okay.
Because we started large, and it filtered down.
Okay. And, and so you're looking for a synopsis of those recommendations?
I believe that our chairman is going to produce a report that is going to describe all the things that were discussed over the term. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
The recommendations coming from.
Now, he's got, and was he present at all these meetings?
I, Jerome, I don't know. I can't answer that.
Okay, now, I guess, and the second question is that have we already budgeted for the, for the Harbor Master Plans? Do we, do we, do we have a number there?
I believe we do, yes. Yes, we do budget for this study to be done this year.
Okay, so do you remember what that line, how much it was?
About fifty thousand dollars pops in my head. Was that something? Was it?
Forty? Forty? Okay. Wait, forty or...
It was enough.
Okay, here's, here's an idea. Why, okay, let's go ahead and go forward with this and instruct staff to, to go ahead and advertise this, and we can do that with the provision or with an denim or a note or something that says that we have this report that is pending and that, because I'm thinking by the time this goes out, and by the time the applicant, the applications start coming in, we will have the report that can be provided to any of the applicants. So in light of that, I think that the timing would work out, so we can go ahead and go forward with this, not waste the two weeks, but because we'll have answers by the time that report is ready.
Right, I would agree with that. And then the closing date, because the holidays are here.
I was just thinking about the holidays, the Sceski holidays. So if we, if we would put, if we're going to advertise in local papers, for example, there's deadlines to submit, I think, we've missed, we've missed, because it would be legal notices, so we'd, so we'd have to consider that. There's always a little bit of leight time to catch that. We would put it on our website. We can generate a list to mail directly to marine consulting engineering firms that we're aware of.
Especially the folks that...
So, so we can do all of that, but it'll, it'll take some time, and then, boy, at this point in time, I think to try to close it even before Christmas.
No, I don't see it.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't even think about it until maybe mid-January.
Mid-January.
My only concern is, I think, Zeke, I think you mentioned it, that this report, the Humpback report, I think should be recorded parcel of the RFP, should it not? So if they get it...
Perhaps before they send. What, what we would normally do, this, this is the RFP, this is what, like I say, we generate a list of firms to mail it directly to or email it, this is what they're going to get. And then the proposal packet would include that report, and it also would include if they want to look at our docs engineering that was done, you know, that's certainly pieces of it. So that would be part of our proposal packet.
That's what I get, I get. Firms like Fort Coast Avenue, they'll either just not ask for any more information, or they'll want to see more information, or ask if they can receive more. So it depends on the firm.
And then one more question, and this is just a matter of administration. Why do we, I've seen it before, why do we request ten copies? Is that so that we save on the photocopying?
It's, it's not really saving on photocopy. A lot of times, they come hard-covered photos bound, hard to copy, hard to throw in the copy.
Oh, okay.
And so if we, we ask for ten copies, so each of you can have one, everyone can have one, and each can have one with their, that is, that's hard, the magic ten. So if you want us to go ahead and proceed with putting it out there, we'll have a closing date prior to the second meeting, council meeting in January. Okay, we will do that.
So would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I, sure, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to go forward with publishing the RFP, and I think that's all, right? Oh, with a closing date of, no later, no earlier than Janu- January fifteenth?
Or before the second meeting?
No later than January fifteenth.
Well, no earlier or, nor later than January fifteenth, so they have to have it by the end of January, yes.
It's like, well, like a Thursday or Friday before that meeting day.
Yeah. January fifteenth.
January, yeah.
Yeah, January fifteenth, then, yeah.
I think the fifteenth is great.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's a business date for one thing, so, yeah.
How does that coincide with one of our meetings? Is that...
It's just prior, it's the Friday prior to, say, council meeting.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Call please.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Grant.
Teen?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, we have an award, the twenty fifteen sixteen Employee Safety Bonus, and that was presented to me in the, then, the last trip. So take it away.
So tonight, every, every December before Christmas, you kind of remember, asking your authorization to distribute the safety bonus for the policy, and this year, I'm really happy to announce that our workers' comp insurance, our experience rating factor is down to point seven five. There's only been one time before in the city's history that I know it's been lower than that. It was a point seven-two at one time. Yeah, so, so what that means is, instead of paying a hundred percent of the premium, the city is paying seventy-five percent. And the safety bonus policy that's been in effect for a number of years is such that any savings the city realizes by this reduced rating, it goes to, into the safety bonus for the employees. It's an incentive program. So tonight, the fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, actual savings is six thousand two hundred thirteen dollars, and it should say thirty-six cents, not thirty-four. We budgeted seven thousand two hundred thirty, so it's under the budgeted amount for this fiscal year, so we're asking for council's authorization to distribute that.
How much? Six thousand or the difference between?
The, the actual savings is six thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-six cents, even though the memo says thirty-four cents. So that would be the amount that would be distributed amongst the twelve employees.
Twelve? Oh, we're a city.
They didn't say about the council bonus?
Um, hurry, is, is this a bonus distributed evenly between these twelve employees?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't, in, in no regards to length of service or rank in, in...
No, no, it's just divided by however many we have.
So even if somebody was here six months, there's no requirements for...
There hasn't been. It's just, every employee, like I said, it's a safety incentive program. On the other side of this, there was a point in the city's history where we were paying like a hundred and ten percent and higher because we had so many incidents and claims. It was, it was awful. So this incentive program's really been a good thing, I think. Everybody's more conscious of being safe and working safe and wearing a safety gear, and it's, it's been a city win.
Am I writing, just, so am I right in assuming that the bonus will be about five hundred dollars a piece?
Five seventeen.
Why don't you...
Brady, would you give us the definition of an employee? And so many months, so, so much time, I mean, it isn't like they just walk through the door.
Right, they're gonna...
It's a terrible...
Right, you have a period of, so they go through the application procedure, and then there's a probationary period of six months where your curves are held and, and five percent is held out, and you don't get holidays or anything. So you're just kind of rooting yourself for that probationary period.
Do we have any probationary employees? Everybody's been here for quite a while.
Yeah, we have one that's just off probationary, our plant operator. He's been doing a really good job. He's a blessing to have with the skills, so it's...
He's been here six months?
Yeah, and he's, he's done really well as far as not having to get, you know, he gets called out and handling stuff on his own, and calling out other employees or getting outside contractor, like electricians or...
Excuse me, Brady, the other side of that coin, too, he came to us with the paperwork and the schooling and things that we didn't have to do with him as an employee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Right, exactly.
So... So we'd like to...
Could I just ask an obtuse question? What do we do for the city for, you have a part-time employee that you're, you're a customer?
Yeah.
And so here we are talking about giving you guys five hundred bucks. What do we do for him?
Well, he's actually working for DBSI, so it's a Humpback.
So are you allowed to give BSI, BSI or...
DBSI, DBSI.
Were you allowed to give one of those employees any kind of incentive or award?
They're not employees.
No, they're not employees.
No, that's not it, yeah.
Thank you, Brady. We have a motion on that, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we go forward and with Perry's recommendation to disperse the two thousand fifteen sixteen safety bonus among the employees of the city in gratitude for their attention to safety and all its ramifications.
Call please.
Grant?
Grant.
Teen?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yeah.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Thank you again. We all appreciate it.
The report continues on the...
That's, that's Gary Law's brother?
Yeah, the father's law.
Back to you, the lab recorder, correspondence.
Oh, I do have a couple of items of correspondence. One is an email from Tom Webb, and he's trying to recruit at least one of you to join in on the December ninth session of the Leadership Linking Program. They are having a panel discussion on that date regarding courage and ethics in leadership, and they would be pleased to include a City of Depot Bay City Council member. So they, he called, and I asked him to please email, and, because we have this meeting coming up, and I would ask if any of you would be interested or, and or available to participate. Let's see, it says, it's December ninth, panel discussion will begin at ten a.m., is scheduled to run sixty minutes, and it's going to be at the GP headquarters in Toledo.
But if no one else is really pressed on wanting to go to this, I'd definitely be interested.
I would deeply love to go and participate in this, however, it would be contingent on whether I could switch days off with, with my co-op. So, but I'm glad to know that it will, we will have representation. What about your idea?
If you, you didn't really give me a deadline to let him know, the RFP, so, so Robert, if you're interested, I'd give him your name, and Joe, if you're interested and you can...
I can certainly find out if it's possible.
Change your schedule, let me know.
Yeah.
And if there's anybody else, just let me know on fast time. Thank you. We better make another. And the other item of correspondence is Michael Metz's resignation letter from the Harbor Commission. He said, I, Michael Metz, am resigning from Harbor Commission effective November twenty two, twenty fifteen. And so the council's ready to accept that, motion to accept that before the vacancy.
So, wait. Sorry. Call please.
Teen?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yeah.
Mathel?
Regretful, yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Hi.
Since the motion's already been passed, I think it could just be a suggestion, like we usually do, and sometimes we forget to say, we certainly want to include a letter of thanks for the, for great service.
I thought we already did that, the mic.
No, that was the other mic.
Okay.
There were, remember the mics?
There was a pair of mics.
Okay, all right, all right. Sorry.
That's all, well...
There's a, okay.
That's really all the correspondence I had.
The Ray, the Ray Cotton letter, what's that?
The Ray Cotton letter, you should have a copy of what the city mailed to him.
Oh, this is the only one in the city.
Is that, is that what you're looking at? Happy to say that Mr. Cotton is in compliance. He has stopped advertising, and everything is placed out as vacation rental.
Have you shared that with the folks that, that was gone, Sue brought it?
Was this going somewhere in Florida? So you got...
Sure, yeah. Well, Guy and Sue had brought that to our attention, because of the marketing and all that was going on.
What the no...
Yeah, Mr. Cotton was apologetic and sort of...
Yeah, he, we sent out our letter, and he responded, so that's how that enforcement stuff works. Counselor Sparks did send an email, and he, he, he said that he's, was sad to hear that there was only one applicant for the Harbor Commission, but he has volunteered in his email to kind of take the lead on recruitment when it gets started. He's supposed to be back, I think, this weekend, so, just FYI.
Thank you. Your turn, Brady.
Okay, so, staying with the enforcement initiative, I've got letters going out to the two property owners over here at the coffee shop and bottle tea repair shop for Mr. Chupo. So that's moving forward. Hopefully, we get, gentlemen, we get this property off the other folks' lot and get into compliance, so I'll keep the council updated on how that's going, because there's a lot of concern with Mr. Chupo. This, on another item, the city crews have, we have the Christmas trees up installed, they're, they have lights on them, they're ready for the ceremony that the chamber has. The lighting ceremony is going to be Saturday night about six o'clock, and we've got, the city crews got our end done, so we're ready. And we've got some big trees this year. We had a little difficulty getting the march noble up on the roof. We had to get a crane from Copland Lumber to assist us, so, because it's getting a little heavy. little heavy and hard of liability, we couldn't gather enough coast guard guys to climb, so anyway, it was safer that way.
What day did it say?
Pardon?
The lighting, what day did it say?
It's, it's December fifth.
It's the Saturday sixth.
So, yeah, it's going to be down there, the, well, at Turbine Center and kids, Sam is going to be there and.
Tomorrow's going to be the test as to whether those wires are good enough.
That's right. Yeah, they got it lashed down pretty good, so.
No doubt.
Okay, in other news, there, we're going to have a local timber company, Hancock Timberland, that's one of the councils to know, they're going to be clear cutting within this upcoming month, right alongside our raw reservoir. You can see our reservoir is, is right here and they're going to be right up against it, so-called a buffer, we're going to use, but it's referred to from Hancock as deposed again. And that's the clear cut, and it's quite a bit of land and it's borderlines right up to Hills of Deco Bay, it's on the other side of the hill, so it's just right in our backyard. They, they say in their notes that they're going to be hauling the timber to the north, so it would be going out the truck roads to the north of town and not through Paul Street or whatever.
Good, good.
Try to hold it.
Is there any concern with them doing that for our watershed?
Um, there's a turbidity concern big time. So, yeah, they clear cut and there's heavy rains and it's, it's still, there's a lot, it would maybe be down the road, like possibly after it's clear cut next winter, unless it, it grows back enough, so I'll, stuff like that.
When is the starting date on there?
Within this next month.
Lovely.
You can hear it back in.
I know.
Yeah, they'll be the talky tutors.
Brady, do you recall what the required, set back, buffer is?
Yeah, it's fifty feet from any stream. And they've got a buffer around each stream to the west of the city's reservoir. And it, this clear cut border is right along, it's going to be right there, and Hills of Deco Bay, so it's, yeah, it's, I guess it's inevitable with stuff like this.
They give all that stuff to the twenty-five hundred line up?
Yeah, everything, yeah.
You're going to be monitoring that closely, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I let them know, I mean, I sent one guy an email today from Hancock Timberland XL Incorporated.
That's good.
So, yeah, to, to, because they're going to want surveyors in there and stuff, so we'll have to let them in our game, so get cars and info. So, and I'll keep council updated, see what, you know, how it's going. Segue into the earth and dam up there in the reservoir, that's going well. I talked to the engineers today from civil west, it should be complete by late December and ready to go out to construction as soon as they're, they're, work is done. So they've got some great ideas for repairing the current type of piping in the earth and dam and having an feasible repair plan, so that's, I think that's good news all the way around.
Brady, how is that syncing up with the salmon enhancement dock replacement program?
It should be great because they'll, they can actually be doing their, their, their construction, hopefully they can keep the eggs in, in containment, and then by the time the dam's done, reservoir's filled up, will be about the time the can needs to be installed and their, their salmon fry at that time, so I think the timing's.
And what about the replacement? Have they gotten their, they haven't gotten their grant money to have that?
No, but we're, we're going to have it set up in such a way where, you know, if the operators need to access that prior to having a float dock out there, we can have just a little paddle boat we have at the water plant now to get out to the, to the dock area, because that's what the city's going to have is a, an area of for piling out there that's got a stanchion and a dock offshore, so when the float dock is complete, then that will be installed there like a, kind of a button, so, yeah, we'll still have access to that.
Is the water going to be completely drained out of the reservoir?
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, well, last time we did it, we reverted the stream, there's still some stream water, but we were able to get that into a pump, pump area and pump it up and out, down into the street, so it doesn't empty it completely.
What about the fish?
The fish will go out the sluice gate, they, they enter the street, and then a lot of cutthroat will head upstream from, they've got a built-in system that will make them want to go up instead of out. The salmon will want to go out, the cutthroat will want to go upstream. So they'll replenish that reservoir, they, I mean, they were right back in after last time we emptied it, up to two years, all the fish were back. The salmon and hands, don't worry about losing fry, you know, from the, from the cutthroats because they eat them crazy. Okay, and then we've got a DQ permit that's a renewal, it's every five years it's coming up, just a pretty important document. Gary Walsh, plant operator, lead operator, myself are working on that, and we'll have that completed, it's due by January fourth, so it's a pretty good deal. So we'll, we'll keep, going to Beach Sanitary District and assuming too of what's going on because they're, they're kind of part of this too with, you know, their, their flows that will treat. And other than that, that's about it.
Thank you, Brady.
Crews of San busy, we're in the Christmas mode. Community Hall's done and everything also, city hall's got lights, so.
I'd heard the community hope that redo, the floors?
The floor, yeah, yeah, over did that.
I heard it's a rainy day project, it looks fantastic. I heard it turned out great.
Yeah, it really looks really well. Goes to the new kitchen, yeah.
Any put up the lights on the hall today?
Yeah, we're ready, so. Nice to be ahead of things because sometimes we get caught where there's a big broken vein or something and we don't have enough time to get things, you know, stirring it at the last minute. Also the docks, because Phil has the docks ready to go on timer, so lighting ceremony, the docks will be red and green on all the docks down there, we'll look at that.
And what about our decorations for the poles on the storefronts?
Um, I think the chamber does that, we don't have, we don't have those, but they, they do a lot of work with the bridge and.
Yeah.
And the swag and I think some stuff off the poles possibly, I don't know, they, there was word that we were going to look into getting stuff like seaside hat with star fish and things, but that never really occurred, so I think we should.
They were getting us stuff out of the stories yesterday, I think it was. So never been there on it.
Yeah. Good.
Council comments, sorry, I would call them.
What happened?
Yo.
Interesting acknowledgement tonight, I received a phone call, somebody's been pestering my cell phone for about three months, and finally this person contacted me, they're from an outfit called Picasso, and I talked to someone in the city staff about Picasso, but I guess I want to make that comment is, they were looking, and apparently what Roy and his committee are doing on planning commission is stirring up some interest out there in transient room rentals. And this person had called me, claimed not to have any interest in the affair, and she's only calling out of the goodness of her heart and yada, 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 requesting public hearing towards putting in transient room tax into every neighborhood in, in this town. And when I told her of the work of Roy and his committee, it kind of silenced her a little bit, and when I offered to speak to the people she was so kindly representing out of the goodness of her heart, and by the way, Picasso is a vacation rental outfit, what she was doing, so I, I commented to her, please have your constituency call any member of the city council to discuss opening transient rooms up to the whole community, and I've heard nothing since that. So I just wanted to acknowledge that there's some interest in stirring the bees nest out there as far as the transient room rentals, that's all. It's just an acknowledgement I received, it was a bizarre call.
Robert? I mean, the comment I have is again on the, probably directed toward Parks Commission, great job on that rock sign that's at the community hall, and I understand the, the anchor is going to be mounted very soon. I think it's going to lean against the rock, looks really nice. That's it. Joel?
Yeah, I'll just take this time to make a, a little bit of an announcement. We have a, an old cook of ours and actually worked all around town, was probably cooked for everybody that, for, for the spouting horn, for, it's probably the chowder bowl, um, yeah, and for, you know, and he's been in the community over, over twenty-nine years. And his name is Steve Shore, he's a Navy Vietnam veteran, and he's tough, I'll tell you just a little bit about Steve, he helped Claire and I out a lot when we first started, he was a dedicated employee that really, one time he cut off the end of his finger, bless his heart, and I was, I was, I got ready to take him down to the clinic, and I did. Before I did, he just took it to the flat top and cauterized it and said, "I'm ready to go back to work." He's very tough. I took him back down to clinic, they managed it, he didn't want to go home for that day. He's just loyal to fault, I won't say he's falling on hard, fallen on hard times because he, he keeps going, but he has, he ran, he has his trailer that leaks like a sieve, and when my doctor, when my wife found out about that, she stepped in and she's advertised at the paper, advertised online, we're doing a, a benefit fish fry and silent auction at the Seahack tomorrow between twelve and six.
That's what I want in the name.
And so Steve is a great guy, he's a good American, and it's a hundred percent going to go to purchasing him a newer RV that does not leak, okay? Something in the new millennium. So, and that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. As you have known Steve for years, he, he's a tough guy.
Yeah.
He's so clever.
I don't want to have any complaints.
Okay, serving the.
Serving fish.
All I want to know is what it is before my time.
All right, time is ten minutes after eight, we are adjourned.